Everybody ready? I think, uh, sure that we can try to find each other, I guess. All right. The regular meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees is now called to order. Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Present.
Dr. Pausio.
Present.
Dr. Payne.
Present.
Ms. Trivell.
Present.
And Dr. White.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
The chair recognizes a quorum. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for joining us at our Indianapolis Public Library Board meeting. The weather is warmer and the end of the school year is near, and today we are 12 days away from the kickoff of our annual summer reading program. You'll hear more about it in the CEO report, but I do want to say that the branches and programming team have come up with an exciting theme this year, as usual, but this year, we know kids and adults alike will love the theme, "Our Animal Friends Pets." So on June 1st, our branches will officially unleash summer reading. Thank you to all of those who are preparing for what I'm sure will be another successful summer. Also wanted to express gratitude to the Indianapolis Public Library Foundation. Summer reading program would not be possible without the ongoing generosity and the major commitment of the Library Foundation, whose support is instrumental in fulfilling our mission with summer reading and all the other programs that bring literacy, resources, and services to all the members of our community. Thank you to the Foundation. Thank you to our librarians and staff for sharing your knowledge, creativity, and service to readers of all ages through this annual program. And we are grateful to everyone for helping to spread the word to make this year's program the best. And if you haven't already planned to, please get together to participate with your friends and family. I'm happy to see you all here today, and I will now ask Beach Grove Library Branch Manager, Mr. Todd Gilbert, to step forward to present the Library Branch Report. Good evening, Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening. Thanks for having me.
Good evening.
I'm Todd Gilbert. I'm the branch manager here at the Beach Grove Branch. I've been the branch manager here for just over five years, in year number six. I'm joined today by my circulation supervisor, Jill Laker, who also has a short statement she'd like to share at the conclusion of mine. I've put together a short presentation for you to welcome you to the Beach Grove Branch and help you to learn more about us and what we do and a little bit more about Beach Grove. So with that said, let's queue up our video.
Welcome to the Beach Grove Branch of the Indianapolis Public Library. The Beach Grove Branch is located at 1102 Main Street, in the heart of beautiful Beach Grove, Indiana, recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City, USA. Many departments support the staff at the Beach Grove Branch in their daily work. The Beach Grove Branch would like to mention just a few. Our facilities team monitors conditions and helps to keep the building safe and comfortable. Without our shipping team, books and other materials would not arrive for patron use. And our IT department keeps our computers and other technology working smoothly. This is the power of teamwork. The Beach Grove Branch also receives support from the local community and some other internal groups. We just recently hosted Youth Fund Day alongside the Beach Grove Comprehensive Drug-Free Coalition. We have hosted many lineage research workshops with the Samuel Bryan Chapter of the DAR, and our own digital inclusion team and technology learning specialists regularly visit to host computer classes for the public in our technology lab. A special mention to our friends at the Beach Grove City Schools and to South Grove Intermediate School, a member of our shared system. It is fair to say that the Beach Grove Branch receives tremendous support from both our external and internal partners. In addition to books, DVDs, and other physical materials, library staff enjoy helping patrons with all of their information-seeking needs. From NDPL's databases, offering everything from auto-repair resources to crafting the perfect resume, to assistance with printing, copying, and faxing. Patrons can stop by in person, call us on the phone, or reach out by email. We are always happy to help. Beach Grove hosts the NDPL Seed Library. Classes from our NDPL Digital Inclusion Team in our tech lab upstairs. A wide range of entertaining and educational programming provided by the NDPL Programming Department, the Hot Spot Checkout Program, and a variety of branch-planned activities such as storytime and book discussion. In 2023, the Beach Grove Branch presented over 100 individual programs with attendance of more than 2,500 patrons. The Beach Grove Public Library has served the city of Beach Grove since 1951, when it opened at a storefront location. Its current building, dating back to 1953, has undergone four renovations and additions, the most recent in 2019. In 2016, the library merged with the Indianapolis Public Library to become the Beach Grove Branch, NDPL's 23rd branch location. Some fast facts about the Beach Grove Branch. Over 7,700 NDPL patrons call Beach Grove their home branch, with 670 new borrowers registered in 2023. 2024 door count from February through April, following installation of the new door count system, is well over 16,600 individual patron visits. Patrons have logged into over 4,000 individual public PC sessions so far in 2024, and our current collection size of over 58,000 items yielded over 135,000 physical checkouts from May 2023 through April 2024. The Beach Grove Branch building is a true marvel. At a total building footprint of 33,000 square feet, the Beach Grove Branch is the largest branch facility in the NDPL system. The Beach Grove Shops is a railway maintenance facility in Beach Grove. It also contains a very large freight yard. The longstanding association of Beach Grove with trains gives rise to our unifying theme expressed by our model train in the children's area, and the large train car perfect for kids and families to sit and read a book or listen to a story, all aboard. Who makes up the Beach Grove Branch? We are one branch manager, one circulation supervisor, two full-time librarians, one full-time library assistant, five part-time or hourly library assistants, one page, and seven volunteers, five young people who help out in our children's department, and two adults who assist the Beach Grove Historical Society in our local history room. But we are more than that. We are also the hundreds of patrons and community members who visit us on a daily basis, rain or shine to check out a book, attend a program, use a study room, or log into a public PC. We are the Beach Grove Branch. Thank you for visiting the Beach Grove Branch of the Indianapolis Public Library, and please
Good evening. My name is Jill Laker. I'm a member of the Beach Grove community, a library patron, and the circulation supervisor here at Beach Grove. June marks the eighth anniversary of Beach Grove joining NDPL, what an exciting journey the last eight years have been. Todd has shared a snapshot in his presentation of where we are today. I want to share with you the opportunities and changes that have affected staff and patrons over the last eight years. Prior to the merger, the Beach Grove Library was facing hardships that many small libraries faced: funding concerns, staffing issues, and the change challenges of a changing community. Under the guidance of the then-Beach Grove Library Director Liz Shetley and the library boards of Beach Grove and NDPL, it was determined that merging would be a win for both systems. Change can be hard, and patrons initially had many concerns, mostly about how this would affect the staff, and the staff was affected in many positive ways. Only three of the original members of Beach Grove staff still work in the branch. While a few did leave the system for other pursuits, many others have promoted within the system, including the current director of Central Library, a regional children's librarian, a librarian of volunteer supervisory lawyer-- excuse me-- a volunteer supervisor librarian, and a PSA. Current and former Beach Grove staff members spend time serving on committees such as the LBGTQIA+, Circ Standing Committee, the Staff Association, Homeschool, Digital Inclusions, and CAPS Review Committees, among many others. The level of opportunities continues to become available to past and current staff of Beach Grove is astounding. As the community of Beach Grove continues to change, patron needs have evolved as well. The Beach Grove Branch strives to serve an ever-diversifying patron base. What was once a mostly Caucasian community has expanded to include patrons from many cultures and ethnic backgrounds from around the world. As a result, our collection has expanded as well to include a variety of language and cultural options that better reflect our diversity. In 2017, the Library Card Initiative placed a card in every Beach Grove student's hand, giving a community of children the opportunity to independently visit the library. Teens and older elementary students enjoy spaces created just for them, while family computing stations allow adults to work while their children play nearby. Another win for our patrons are the computer classes offered by the Digital Inclusion Team. While computer classes were available pre-merger, the variety of courses has exploded as the result of these group of trainers. They offer our patron courses that far surpass the level of experience of our branch staff. Courses like digital design, podcasting, and Canva, in addition to Word, Excel, and basic internet usage, help patrons grow while not overwhelming local branch staff. With all the benefits the merger has offered, my favorite part of working at the library is the sense of community we share. The Beach Grove Branch embraces the role of the third space. Either planned or impromptu, patrons and staff have developed relationships that are important. The joy of showing off our remodeled space in 2019, handing books through car windows as service resumed in 2020, to sharing hugs and tears upon reopening with no restrictions, watching children grow through years of summer reading to graduation, then getting first library cards for their own children, witnessing old friends reconnect during a well-timed visit, and watching new friendships spark and grow, seeing parents regain custody of children, the jobless get jobs, seeing people help each other out of kindness. As I enter comments from the NOW survey for this strategic plan, I can see the impact of this place and this staff, and how we support those that walk through our doors. It is a pleasure to be part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert and Ms. Laker. We appreciate all that you've shared, and just will ask now if board members have any questions or comments.
I have. Dr. Payne?
I was on the board. I'm the senior member on this board.
That's right.
So I was there when all of these discussions were going on, and I'm so happy. You said eight years now.
Eight years now, yes. The last time you were here was June, eight years ago.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, I'll add to that. Originally, we would have hosted the board meeting here again in March of 2020, and as we know, that was not a great time.
Oh, no.
So we're delighted to actually have the board come back now, that we've come up in the rotation again.
Well, we're delighted that everything has worked out so well. I loved your theme, "The Power of Teamwork," and I love your background music, too. The rain is up here, just dancing. You said you have a tech lab on the second floor?
That's right.
Do you teach technology? Can people actually learn? Is it there just for them to use, or do you actually teach?
It's there. The intent is to offer more, but we are currently partnering with the Inclusion Lab and the technology specialists that work through PDA. When they're able to, they like to come out and teach these kinds of classes out in the branch. This is something usually folks can preregister for, that's an announced thing, that they can sign up. They can choose a session that interests them. They're trying to offer a very robust slate of programs to interest a wide variety of interests, so whether it's, as Jill mentioned, Canva, or just learning to use Microsoft Word, or learning some Excel skills that might help you in a job search. This kind of educational programming that we can do in a separate dedicated lab means we don't need to take the regular public PCs out of service to also host a course or a class. So being able to offer both simultaneously is a real plus.
And we were, lastly, we were also introduced to your book club.
Yes, you were. They're a very active bunch. They enjoy their books.
Yeah, they were about 10, looked like sitting down waiting to come up to the room. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a comment. It's a wonderful facility, so thank you for keeping it nice. I hear the patrons really like it, so thanks.
We appreciate you saying so. Thank you very much.
Great. Well, thank you again, and thank you again to you and the whole team here for hosting us and for maintaining. As Dr. Palacio said, such a great facility.
Well, welcome to Beach Grove and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the food was great, too.
And our next agenda item is public comment, and Ms. Gilbert will administer that for us?
Yes, we do have a couple of people signed up before that begins. I'd like to say we welcome feedback from the public about our Indianapolis libraries, and this is a time when the public may address the library board. If there are several individuals representing the same group, please select the spokesperson. Please do not repeat the same comments someone else has offered. Please note also that the public comment time is not the appropriate forum for commenting on matters related to employee charges, employee complaints, or alleged employee misconduct. Any such matter should be brought promptly to the attention of the CEO or the Human Resources Department, where matters can be properly addressed in compliance with established library policies and procedures. A five-minute limit will be allowed for each speaker. Each speaker should give their name, and if they are speaking on behalf of a group. First person up is Michael Torres, and then we have representatives from the Staff Association who will speak after my call.
Good evening.
Good evening, board. My name is Michael Torres. I'm president of Ask Me Local 3395, representing Indianapolis Public Library workers. First, I want to propose, again, my annual proposition is for you to consider switching your board meetings to a Wednesday or Thursday, so more staff and other people could attend. I know we all like to be at home doing other things, but at the same time, if it's available for us, and more people might show up, then we can have more participation. So I think I do this every year, so I'm going to do it again, and this is my annual pitch for that, again, for you all to consider that. So, secondly, I want to talk about our collective bargaining agreement. I will admit, the process of negotiation was a little bit more relaxed this time, and we were all interested and all in for it. The CEO, the CFO, and the HR Director, and our team of three started meeting last fall. We made quick progress, and we signed off on several tentative agreements. We even finished the economics. Then in January, we got word from HR that the Sunday article was not to the liking of the Staff Association, or somebody. Not sure who didn't agree with our proposal, but we agreed to reopen that article, even though it was signed off a month before. Technically, a tentative agreement is legal, and reopening a signed agreement is not normal unless you get a favorable result. If a favorable result isn't achieved, then that would be bad faith bargaining. But we came up with a compromise that is more favorable for all, so we lucked out with that one. Our goal, as always, you know, is to work together. That happened in January. Last month, I was told the lawyers were finally looking at the tentative agreements, and at last week's town hall meeting, the HR Director said the board is looking at it and has questions. Here it is, May, almost June, and we still don't have a contract for our members to ratify. Just for context, at previous contract discussions, the attorney gave the board periodical updates. So when tentative agreements were assigned, we were done. All that was left for us to do was to type up the articles in a document for the members to vote on. That, over here. Once the members got to vote on it, it went to the board for their approval. Because board relied on the library's team to do the best, they basically signed off on it, and we were done. Well, I believe we learned a huge lesson experimenting with negotiations. As much as we encourage the discussions to be amongst the library staff, in my opinion, we should either tighten up the process or consider returning to the normal process, where we would sign off on tentative agreements, then the next step would be ratification and a board vote. It may be a few years away, but I would like for you all to reconsider working the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, next we have representatives from the Staff Association. Didn't write down their names, I think I saw.
Linda Mulligan and Peggy Weir.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Different view.
Okay.
Good evening, President Tribble, members of the board, CEO Hill. We are here tonight from the Staff Association Program and Scholarship Committee. As a reminder, our committee provides programming for our two general meetings every single year. And then the second part is we get to hand out scholarship funds, which we're here to do tonight twice a year. As you can see, our members are Deb Barrett, Jenna Maddox, Melinda Mulligan, Lindsay Haddix, Rachel Weisner, myself, and our committee chair, Shanika Hayward. Scholarship funds are given to staff association members who are either working on their master's degree in library science or their undergraduate degree. Tonight, we're happy to hand out checks to four staff members from across the library system. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Melinda, who will now do the presentation of the scholarship checks.
And actually, if you'll call it. If you'll call out names, I'll hand out checks.
Okay. Oh, so much easier. Andrew Coe? He was right here. Oh, he'll be back. Katrina Burnett? Katrina Burnett. Cory Minor.
And the last one is not available to be here today, but it's Valerie LaFave.
Valerie LaFave, PSL from my branch, who's on vacation at the moment. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to let you know how very much we enjoy being with you. When was that?
May, 2023, I looked it up.
Yes, the food was amazing. The venue was amazing. The prizes were amazing, even though I didn't win one. And I just want to thank you so much.
You're very welcome. We enjoy, I guess, planning parties and handing out money. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, great. Okay, we're moving forward to approval of minutes. We have minutes from the regular meeting of April 22, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for April 22, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved. The motion carries. An executive session from May 13, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session held May 13, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved. The motion carries. Moving on with committee reports. The Finance Committee chaired by Dr. Patricia Payne and members, Dr. Louise Palacio and Dr. Eugene White. Dr. Payne?
Okay, I'm waiting on Lolita to come up, our CFO, and Mary, who do such an amazing job. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. President Tribble and trustee officers. Today, Mary and I will review the treasury report for April 2024, which is four months into the fiscal year, which is 4/12 of the year, which the budget targeted should be 33%. For revenue, if we exceed 33%, it'd be favorable. If we're under 33% for the expenditures, it'd be favorable as well. You should also have the PowerPoint in front of you. So the property taxes, we receive most of our, well, some of our, a small portion of our taxes. Thank you. And on page 24 of the cash flow, you'll see the, we received the remaining of our taxes in June of 2024. That'd be page 24 of your board packet, if you're looking at your board packet. And then the intragovernmental is consistent month to month. We receive the same amount every month. Charges for services for the month of April, we received $31,000 for public printing. And for miscellaneous interest revenue, for the year-to-date amount was $520,000. And for the year-to-date amount, I mean, I'm sorry, the year-to-date amount is $520,000, and the month-to-date is $127,000. As you can see, that we're receiving more interest than we did last year, and that is because of the sweep account that we have with Chase. Our Hoosier Fund is remaining consistent with 5.4% interest. And that, and the investment report is on page, I believe, 33 of your board packet. And the Trust Indiana percentage is gradually going low, and is at 5.36%. Okay, thank you. On this next slide, you'll see the month-to-date graph. And you'll see that the blue slide is for 2024, and the orange is for 2023, and the gray is the month-to-date budget. As you can see, for the blue in the property tax, you'll see that it's a little lower. However, by the end of this quarter, you'll see that it exceed our budgeted amount. And for the next graph is the year-to-date amount. And again, the blue is 2024, the yellow is 2023, and it, I mean, the orange is 2023, and the yellow is the year-to-date budget. Any questions in regards to the graphs? On the next slide is expenditures, and Mary will review the expenditures.
The expenditures as of April were favorable, all being under 33%. So personal services and benefits is 3% less than the budget had expected. The supplies are a little high, but they're still within budget. Legal is under the monthly, I mean, other services and charges are under budget. The largest part this month is, was legal. And that's just the way the invoices came in to us and got paid. Capital outlay, because this is the operating fund, this is primarily the books, and it's consistent with last year. So, and then we have the graphs. April, the month, is over on the left with the budget being in gray for each type, personal services and benefits, supplies, other services and charges, and capital outlay. Of course, personal services and benefits is the largest component of the operating budget. And then there's a year-to-date graph. And we do have a mistake on our graph because the year-to-date budget should be $12.9 million instead of $9.7 million. I don't think we updated that from last year, month, last month.
That's under the personnel service.
Yeah. And any questions on expenditures? We also have the full comparison of a five-year review on revenue and expenditures by type. And our revenue is very consistent with last year. And the expenses also. A little bit under last year, it looks like, so.
One question. So benefits in 2022 seems to be like an outlier on the graph. Is? Any?
Gray. That was 2022.
It's like?
Yeah, we'll have to look into that.
Four times out of a hundred.
Yeah, that is a standout. We'll look into that.
Okay. I didn't know if it was just a mistake or?
Most likely, it is. Yes, this is April.
For all five years.
Cool.
Yeah, I don't know how. Right.
If you could send us just an update on that, once you've had a chance to look at that. If you have questions, Dr. Payne?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the report of the treasurer?
Yeah, that's the report for the treasurer.
So is there a motion to accept the report of the treasurer for April 2024 for filing for audit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing?
So we're going to fix these things?
Yes, we're going to, they're going to look.
Yeah, that's just the graph. The information you received in your board package is correct. So I'm looking at that. That may be just the budget amount instead of the year-to-date actual. So, but I'm going to confirm that and send that out to the board, the graph.
The data visualization is not technically part of?
Correct.
The treasurer's report, but the numbers in the treasurer's report are correct.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying. Are we ready to call the roll? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Back to Ms. Campbell for Resolution 21, 2024.
Next on the agenda is Resolution 21, 2024. This is a transfer in the operating funds to move the funds from appointed salaries to the repair and maintenance structure and budget line in 2024. The funds from the appointed salaries are from unspent funds from vacant positions in quarter one of 2024. This transfer does not reflect or affect staffing levels or, yeah, staffing levels or staff salaries. The deficit in the repair and maintenance structure is due to the transfer within the Character III to real estate rental, which is the extension of the Glendale lease until June 30th this year, and the consultant service in the month of April. This transfer does not have any impact on the total budget in 2024 as the funds are moving from one account to another. The personnel service total amount is $180,000, and it is moving to repair and structure of $180,000. Any questions? And that is from Character I to Character III.
Okay. Resolution 21, 2024 regarding the transfer between classifications and accounts received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee. So the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved. The motion carries.
Then, next on the agenda is updates. As stated before, we're still currently in the audit season. Crow has started the audit session. It's active right now. Hopefully, we'll have that completed by the end of June for submission to SBOA. And then the 2025 budget season has started. And this is the budget calendar. Right now, we're having budget meetings with our managers. And these are some dates that you can kind of work your calendar. We will present this to the board in August, August the 26th, and then also to the municipal corp around September 12th or the 18th. We don't have the final date for that. And one more thing on the update is that next month for the board meeting, we will also present 2024 bonds.
Okay.
And that's all for the updates from the financial staff. Any questions?
Any questions? Thanks to the Finance Committee, and thank you to our CFO and our treasurer and our entire financial team. And Dr. Payne has a question?
I wanted you to say something about our discussion on how we've been kind to, I don't even know what the word is. When a staff member takes a trip or represents the association and how that will be paid now, can you give an update on that?
That we're in the midst of trying to revise our travel policy. It's not final yet. We're trying to take the financial hardship off our staff by having, paying for the, direct pay for the travel expense that includes hotel and airline, and also including the conference as well. We're still in the process of trying to finalize that. I have presented it to the Finance Committee as well as to the Executive Committee as well. We also have to revise the credit card policy. Hopefully, I'm aiming to have this implemented by second quarter or third quarter of this year.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want?
I mean, third or fourth quarter of this year. I'm already in the second quarter.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Payne. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you again, ladies. And we will go on to the diversity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee chaired by Mr. Raymond Beederman and members, Dr. Palacio and Dr. Payne. Mr. Beederman, is there any report for your committee?
No report, other than next month, we're going to get the opportunity to approve several things. So it's going to be great.
Exciting.
Next month is going to be awesome.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. We'll move on to Facilities Committee Report chaired by Dr. Eugene White and members, Dr. Cola Martada. Dr. White?
Thank you very much. We have two items for board consideration this evening. Resolution 22, 2024. We are requesting, and coming from the committee, we have a due pass recommendation on Resolution 22, 2024. And it is approval of the fixtures, furniture, and equipment contracts for the Nora Branch. That's under renovation. This particular approval will include three vendors, Commercial Office Environment of Indianapolis, Indiana, in the amount of $9,209.28. The RJE Business Interiors of Indianapolis in the amount of $232,805.45. And Officework Services LLC in Fishers, Indiana, for $113,456.11. The, this particular project will be paid out of bond funds, $485 and $488. So the committee is recommending a due pass for this request.
Great. And then, if you don't mind, Dr. White, I'll just point out that there's also XBE utilization that's summarized here in the board action request, a total of 37% MBE, 7.7% WBE, and 1.2% Veteran-Owned Business, and 0.6% Disabled-Owned Business Enterprise.
Yeah, uh, we have, the, uh, committee, Adam has, uh, gone the extra step to make sure that we include this information because this was a resolution and a request of the prior board, uh, and so we're just illustrating that on each other.
That's great. Thank you. Um, Resolution 23 20.
Oh, 22.
Twenty-two, 2024, I'm sorry, regarding approval to award a series, a services contract for furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the Nora Branch Renovation Project. Received a positive recommendation from the facility committees, so, um, the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Um, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Trivel.
Approved.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Back to you, Dr. White.
The next resolution is Resolution 23 2024. We're seeking the approval for fixtures, furniture, and equipment for the Pike branch, uh, which is probably in renovation process. Again, the, uh, contract is broken down with three vendors, Commercial Office Environment of Indianapolis in the amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. RJE Business Interiors of Indianapolis, their amount is twenty thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. And Office Work Services LLC in Fishers for eighty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-five cents. The cost and payment for this particular project for, uh, the, uh, Pike branch will come out of the project bond funds, fund four eighty-five and four eighty-nine. And again, we have an outline of the, uh, DEI impact and the receivers of the distribution.
Great. Resolution 23 2024 regarding the approval to award a services contract for fixtures, furniture, and equipment for the Pike Branch Renovation Project. Also received a positive recommendation from the facilities committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivel.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, uh, to the facilities committee. We'll move on to the library foundation update from Mr. Beederman, please.
One second. I wasn't. I was teasing you. Now I wasn't prepared. That's what I get. All right, uh, May 2024 update. Uh, the Library Foundation was proud to support the May breakfast. Congratulations to the Staff Association on an excellent event. Uh, Library Foundation's May 14th, uh, annual meeting, we elected some new officers. Brad Holt's Chair, Keri Jeter Lewis, Vice Chair, Amparo De La Peña, Secretary, Bertrand Huga, uh, Treasurer, and Angela Major, Media President. Thanks to all the library trustees who attended the annual reception. It was very nice. It was a beautiful reception. I saw some people there. Um, and, uh, and helped us honor, uh, major supporters. Um, uh, Anne Ditwiller and, uh, Maureen Borton received ceremonial gold library cards, beautiful cards made out of gold. Uh, Chuck Cooper, yeah, Chuck Cooper and Florrie Benford Cooper received the highest honor, the Luminary Award, for their longtime support. In addition to that, uh, we thank the hundred and forty-eight donors who made gifts last month, uh, including Blue &amp; Company, First Merchants Bank, Indy Star, Rich Charles, and Salesforce. Um, thank you very much to all of them. Uh, last month, the library provided two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the library. Excuse me, the foundation provided two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the library. Thank you. Well, you were correcting me. I saw it. Uh, examples of major initiatives included the summer reading program, seed library, adult arts program, concert series, and preschool packaged programs. That concludes the report unless there are any questions about the meeting. The food was very nice there.
It was a great reception.
A great reception.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Beederman. We'll move on to the report of the CEO, Mr. Gregory Hill.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Board Members. Uh, before we use the monthly confirmatory Resolution 24 2024 that is related to financial travel and personal matters that occurs between each board meeting, uh, the resolution is in its typical format, and I ask for your approval of the resolution.
So, who?
Is there a motion? Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Resolution 24 2024, um, regarding finances, personnel, and tra-, travel has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivel.
Approved. The motion carries. Back to you, Mr. Hill.
Going forward. All right, uh, my CEO report for May, uh, the report highlights activities for the month of April. Uh, the report will include selected branch programs and programming from the program development area, PDA, uh, Star Award winners, uh, card registration graph, and an update on our goals for quarter two. Uh, first thing I want to talk about was the Glendale branch opening again on March 30th. Um, the door count for the month of April was nineteen thousand, a hundred and fifty patrons came through in April. Uh, to date, the month of April and through May 19th, we had twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-three patrons who visited the branch. Uh, checkouts in April of 2024, this year, we had forty-four thousand eight twenty-sixth. Last year in April, we had thirty-two thousand, uh, one hundred and thirty-five, which is about a thirty-nine percent increase in physical checkouts from the same period last year. And then briefly, I will show a, a video of the grand opening. Today, we'll not only celebrate the unveiling of this beautiful physical space, but also the immense potential it holds for our local community and the broader Indianapolis area. To our Glendale community members and neighbors, I encourage you to embrace this library. It is yours.
I started when I was little at the Rodgerable Library, and so I've just grown with what it's become, and, uh, it's absolutely stunning. It's beautiful. It's laid out very nicely, and I'm so glad you're open.
I think everybody should come here because this is a good library and they have all the books.
All right. Thank you. That was, uh, the highlights for the Glendale, uh, grand opening. Next, uh, branch program highlights. The first one is the Michigan Road branch. On April 13th, their teen advisory group at Michigan Road led a teen egg hunt program. Uh, they searched for eggs that had clues in the books for them to find in the library, and they had about sixteen people who participated in that event. The Wayne had their 24th Annual Teen Mystery Program. This program is usually presented, uh, during National Library Week for ages thirteen to seventeen. We had staff from around the system either act as suspects in the program or to help behind the scenes. Many also helped provide props for the evening, as did the theater department at Ben Davis, so thank you to Ben Davis High School. The teens are fully engaged in all evening, all evening long, taking, strategizing, looking through scenes, clues, asking suspects questions, and generally trying to figure out whodunit. The evening ended with pizza, drinks, and the unveiling of the guilty suspect. Again, thank you, Melinda and the staff at Wayne and all the staff who participated in that event. It's been going on for a long time. Great, uh, event. The info zone, in April, the Butler Lab preschoolers started working on the computers again. They created sand art, and they learned how to use the big mouse. They also worked learning the arrow keys by doing mazes on the computers. Uh, several of the students who had trouble focusing on the computer using the mouse were so much more focused on the mazes. It was awesome to see them successful on the computers and even help other students. Thanks to all the branches again who provided updates for the CEO report for branch programs. PDA program highlights, summer reading, uh, unleash your imagination, SRP registration opened on May 1st, uh, for both the programs. This year, our theme is pets and invites people in to read alongside their pets or any further furry animal that they may have. As of May the 20th, we had, uh, two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine children registered for SRP. We had thirteen groups that compromised two hundred and two individuals, and then the adult SRP, we had one thousand one hundred and forty-six, uh, registered participants. The first day to log reading time will be Saturday, June the 1st. The last day to log reading time is Wednesday, July 31st, and then the last day to pick up prizes is Saturday, August the 3rd. And then, uh, there are approximately twenty-five to twenty-six branches that have, uh, summer reading program kickoffs across the system on Saturday, June the 1st, so be nice to see everybody out and enjoy the summer reading program kickoff on June 1st. Uh, Dia del Nino, Be My Neighbor Day, um, took place on Saturday, April 27th at the Central Library. It was first established in 2015. The event draws inspiration from the Mexican Holiday Day of the Child by celebrating our community children. We encourage children and their families with an inspiring day of activities focused on the five best practices of literacy, reading, writing, talking, singing, and playing. We had over, uh, one thousand two hundred and thirty-five people join us for this special day. Staff and volunteers led storytimes in English and Spanish, including a storytime presented by our own board member, Dr. Louis Palacio. Uh, participants also created crafts and enjoyed a concert by the Grammy, Grammy Award-winning duo, One Twenty-three Andreas. Thank you again to our partners at WFYI for ensuring that the event was a success for all. Uh, April Star Award winners, I will read those off. Uh, patron services was Cat Hill. Peer support, Sergio Barino. Uh, community involvement, we had a lot of folks for community involvement. These are the people who helped make sure that the monument installation, uh, is filled with books for our patrons to take. Uh, Charlie Kane, Davis Dyer, Stephanie Flood, uh, Kate Leets, Leanna Meeker, Ally Mutis Paul, Mike Perkins, Michael Torres, and Rachel Wood, Maggie Ward, and Brad Johnson. Again, thank you for making sure that we, uh, get the books in. I know that was a big concern when we first got the monument back, making sure that we could keep it stocked, so thank you. A few more award winners for April. We have Page Excellence was Jason McNeil. Other duties assigned is Anna Lake. Volunteers and partnerships, Jeremy Hardman, Trevor Fisher, and Kojo Turner. And the committee's choice was D'Amica Newell. And thank you to the Star Awards Committee for their work on, uh, recognizing our staff, and then thank you also for the staff for your nominations. Uh, the next thing we're gonna talk about here real quickly is the library card registration. Uh, this data shows a steady increase in registrations over the years from 2021 to 2023. If you notice, in the first quarter, registrations rose from sixty-eight eighty-three in 2021 to sixty-eight seventy-seven in 2022, and then we had a significant jump to ten thousand forty-six in 2023. The second quarter also saw an upward trend with registrations increasing from fifty-six eighty in 2021 to seven thousand eighty-four in 2022 and twelve thousand two eleven in 2023. And the big jump in the second quarter was due to the, um, uh, card campaign with Wayne Township. Uh, in the third quarter, registrations peaked at fourteen thousand seven forty-two in 2021, but then slightly dropped to ten thousand seven ninety-three in 2022. However, uh, 2023 showed a recovery with twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-one registrants. The fourth quarter continued this positive trend with registrations reaching twenty thousand six ninety-two in 21, fifteen thousand six seventy-two in 2022, and sixteen thousand two ninety-six in 2020, 2023. This indicates a consistent growth in library engagement over the three years. And then slightly down the first quarter compared to the first quarter 22 and 24, I think we had nine thousand ninety-one registered, uh, the first quarter of this year, uh, slightly behind, uh, 2022, but ahead of quarter one in 21 and 22. Uh, some goals for quarter two, a couple of updates. Uh, behavioral policy, uh, under the, uh, project is being directed by or managed by John Helling. We're still working on that, and I do believe we'll have an update at the next DPHR committee. Uh, our business continuity plan, uh, thank you again to Adam Parsons, who's leading that project. We've had, we've made tremendous progress in that. And then the SharePoint Department site is being managed by Shanika Hayward, and Shanika, thank you for your work on that, and we made tremendous progress on that as well. Some of our added priorities, um, we just got word today that our, uh, climate improvement process, uh, will be delivered to us the first week, uh, the week of the 27th. Uh, we're still working with trying to implement the Good Wage Initiative, and then as Lolita mentioned, the, uh, department head budget preparations are in works and, uh, the annual audit, and we're also still continuing to, uh, gather data for our customer service satisfaction survey. And that's the end of my portion of this report. Any questions?
Any questions for the CEO?
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, and to continue on with my report, I will call Strategic Planning and Assessment Officer, Marion McKenzie, to give our quarter one's statistical update.
Yes, and, uh, Ms. McKenzie was patient from last month, and so you have a whole hour. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. But you certainly, you certainly don't have to do the speed presentation that you would have last time, so thank you for your patience and welcome back.
Absolutely. Uh, welcome to the deep dive. We're gonna spend a lot of time on each detail.
You got an hour.
So, um, we're gonna start off with a decrease. We're gonna talk a little bit about physical circulation in quarter one. This is expected. We had a brief period of time in quarter one where we had three branches closed, and then we have two large, popular branches closed. But the impact on circulation has only been two percent, so a two percent decrease, given that, is actually a positive. It's showing that our patrons are willing to go to another branch to receive, continue to receive services. Um, I was recently at an event nearby, uh, where Nora is, and we got a lot of questions about when is Nora gonna open, but the patrons I spoke to reported that they were really enjoying Michigan Road, and they were excited to maybe see a branch that was similar in vibe to that. So, um, all in all, this is a slightly expected decrease. Um, not too concerned. I'm projecting that by the end of the year, we'll have recovered that. I looked at the data for the past month, and the past month, we were at about one percent decrease in comparison to the previous year, so I think we're already starting to recover that. Next up, we have, uh, I think I went too far? Nope. Next up, we have cardholder statistics. Okay. Um, Gregory already shared a little bit about this. As he mentioned, nine thousand and ninety-one new cardholders. Online registration can, continues to be a popular driver, followed, uh, I'm sorry, exceeded slightly by shared systems schools. I think shared systems continue to be a primary driver of new cardholders for us, um, in terms of percentages, so we are really grateful to have that program so well supported and embraced by the schools. You'll see that active cardholders are about fifty-five percent. We have been at around fifty-five percent, fifty-six percent for the past year, year and a half. We continue to make an effort to grow that number, but, um, you know, if it's not going down, at. But, um, you know, if it's not going down, at least we're retaining the people that we have. But of course, every time we enroll a new cardholder, we're hoping that we can continue to keep them active for the entire three years of their library card. In terms of enrollment, some top branches were, of course, central. Fort Bend still continues to be well embraced by their community, as well as Glendale due to the preparing for the reopening and the move, Michigan Road, and then Southport. Next up, I'd like to highlight, uh, program attendance. So, we're seeing an increase in quarter one this year. And we did increase the number of programs we offered, but the increase in attendance is higher than the increase in total number of programs. So I think our total number of programs increased by ten percent, but our attendance rate increased by twenty-three percent. So that's a positive. Of course, our bread and butter patrons are still young families. We see a lot of attendance from early childhood due to storytime, as well as in our school programs. And adults, again, continues to be quite robust, but I always have to remind you that this is staff categorizing people's ages, and they're a little hesitant to classify people as seniors sometimes. So we should anticipate that the adults and seniors numbers are a little bit co-mingled there.
As seniors looks awful low.
Yes, um, so I have, I've done a comparison of the actual program evaluations, which I think, I don't think I put that in the slide deck here today, but the percentage that we get who tell us they're seniors on the surveys and the percentage that we see in the class don't quite match up. So I'm pretty confident that at least a portion of that is that staff room is classifying people. But we still, of course, would love to see more seniors. And we are, our program department is working to expand their senior-oriented programming this year. So we expect to see that grow a little bit.
I was just making a joke about the number fifty-five, fifty-six being the start of the seniors cohort. It's frightening.
It gets more frightening.
If you prefer, we can start to classify by older adults. I believe our partner AARP prefers that.
Seniors fine, and that's actually what, five years later than AARP, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Other thing about program statistics. So we did increase the total number of programs that we offered. And you'll see here that I've highlighted some of the new offerings. So of course, Fort Bend offered their Model Train Show. This was the first year, and it was the same day as Glendale's opening, so I'm sure none of you probably attended. But it went off incredibly well and had great attendance. As well as, we have a passive program, so passive programs are not actively presented by a staff member, but you can drop by and participate in the program. And there's one called Family Spice Club through our East Thirty-Eight Street branch that is showing great response, as well as the CBLC has a film series this spring and this summer. And Fort Bend did a disability resource fair for the first time, and that's something I think they hope to replicate in the future. So, in terms of programming, we're doing great. We're doing more, we're getting better attendance. We're getting slightly more evaluations. I think we went up from two point four to two point seven, but I'll take it because getting people to do surveys is hard. Any questions about anything in this report or in your printed packet, which had a couple more slides?
Any questions for Ms. McKenzie?
I thought you were taking an hour.
I mean, you know.
Dr. Payne said she was in for the long haul.
Is there another Dr. Payne?
I've got my laptop back there with Excel on it. I can give you anything you want. Alrighty, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
And that concludes the CEO's report.
Great. Okay, so, uh, thank you, Mr. CEO, for your report. We'll move on. There's no unfinished business or new business. We do take this time for discussion about items that are not on the agenda and which are of interest to Library Board members and offer the opportunity to suggest topics for future Library Board agendas. Does anyone have any suggestions?
I don't have, I'm sorry. I don't have any suggestions. I do have a statement that I'd like to read. I do want the board and public to know how very much Stephen Lane's brilliance as the only certified librarian on the board is missed. I, and I being trustee Pat Payne, still do not know why the appointing body found it necessary to force Stephen to resign before he was fired. Stephen, I want to thank you for your service and for speaking your truth. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Payne. Thank you. Are, um, are there any other comments or topics for our June board meeting?
Just a comment.
Yes.
We, we have been concerned at the board and of course, the CEO with salary that allow employees to pay their bills and make a decent kind of living. I know that we have a process, and I know Michael is going to do a good job in presenting evidence and situations for negotiations and what have you. But we want, we probably need to let the public know that we're very concerned about, uh, the, the payment of employees in, in the PL. And that, uh, our CEO has, uh, a mission that he has shared with us that the executive team is very, very concerned with trying to balance salaries as much as possible. But I think, uh, we're going to continue to need input. And something else, I asked the CEO, when we compare the amount of money that we get from our government entity to Hamilton County and other places, how do we compare? And percentage-wise, we have been very, very... Somebody said cheat back there, I heard. No, uh, we have been cheated. That's a good word. And I think percentage-wise, when you look in Hamilton County and other areas and look at their percentage for their library systems, we're deprived. And one of the great things that the CEO has done, he has started to meet with individuals from the city council, metro government, what have you, because, of course, they have a lot of sway. And the amount of money we receive, uh, I would like to encourage not only the CEO, but Michael and others with influence to set aside a little time to talk to your favorite councilman or what have you, to share that we're doing great things. I think the testimony tonight in terms of the advantages and the opportunities through the consolidation with Beach Grove, how, where this happened there. We are a great system. However, there, there are a lot of things that we can do. And one of those things is make sure that we fairly compensate our employees. So we need to continue to say, good, better. But we're looking for great, because we are a great system. And so if you have an influence with someone on a city county council or what have you, you should be sharing that information with the CEO, because we need to get people before leaders who have a vote in determining what our percentage is. And hopefully, we can keep that in mind, because, uh, we are, we are not satisfied, we're not pleased, but we are needy. And, and I, I know to the younger people who have, many younger people have those lower positions, it's tough to make it. But I think that if we put forth the effort, uh, together from all parties, from the representatives of our workers, from the board, and other individuals, we may have a shot to get some influence on increasing our distribution from city county government, of metro government, what have you. So those are my comments. And again, I want to commend Gregory and his leadership team, one or two other individuals for having, starting to have those kind of meetings with, uh, metro government members, so we can do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White. And I know, um, since I've been on the board almost every year, there's been a look at the salaries. And, um, the board has continued to approve, to approve increases as a result of that. And so I, I share your enthusiasm and encouragement about, um, making sure that we keep our eye on that and the Good Jobs Initiative that, um, that's already underway, being looked at, so. Okay, any other comments?
I do.
Yes, Dr. Palacio.
Just want to echo what Dr. White has said. This is the kind of conversation that happens a lot of times in the financial committee. So it's not al- always brought up to this public meeting. That's another public meeting, but just like Michael Torres said, sometimes some meetings are not as well attended. So thank you, Dr. White, for bringing this up. This is very important for us, for, I think, everybody working in the system that we bring people up to some sort of market raid or fight the inflation, that kind of stuff. So, thanks. And thanks, Greg, and the rest of the executive leadership for keeping this upfront as a priority. Good Wages Initiative is one step, but we know that it's not where things stop. So it's a process, we're working on it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything, Mr. Beederman?
I'd be amiss if I didn't. No, I, I agree with everything said. Also, thank you to Stephen for his service on the board. You know, he had valuable insight, so definitely thank him for his service. But I agree with everything that's been said today, so I, I don't want to add too much more.
Okay, I didn't want you to be left out.
Yeah, no, I, thank you.
Thank you. I, I, and, um, appreciate everybody's comments. And we probably should look at a way to kind of create that space for that in our agendas going forward. Okay, the next regular meeting of the board is Monday, June twenty-fourth, at the Michigan Road Branch Library, sixty-two oh one Michigan Road, at six thirty. And there being no more business before the board, uh, this meeting is adjourned.